Should I call you Mr. Soloff?
You can call me Stebs.
Stebs?
Did you ever hear that?
No, I have not.
Oh, that was my nickname and that's what they used in the band and all that. When I used to play with eleven eleven.
See, and that's another thing. When eleven eleven was together, definitely. When I looked at you, I was like, yeah, eleven eleven. Now, I just, I totally, it's been, how many years now?
At least ten, what is it, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, ten, twelve years, something like that.
I can't believe it.
All right, everybody watching at home, my name's Steve Soloff and this is InformTheVoteNJ.com. Today, I'm sitting down with Rob Bono, who's on the school board.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me, sir. I very much appreciate it. It, I know you're a busy person. And most political figures are busy people, so. Taking your time out is much appreciated.
Of course.
So, um. Yeah, Rob is on the school board and I'm trying to get a little bit more information from Rob today about what's going on with the school system, the school board and all that. But before we get into it, um. I just want to remind everybody at home who might not already know that I started doing this uh two years ago because I opened the sample ballot in the mail and it was really difficult for me to find information about local political candidates. And so now it's been two years and I'm starting to piece it together a little bit every day. That way hopefully every time election season comes around, people can go to a website and review the information and just say, oh, okay. Now I, I know what's going on and I can vote confidently. As opposed to a lot of people, they go in and they're like, I don't really know who any of the local people are.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah.
And I've struggled with that in the past. Yeah, cuz you really have to look into it, you have to dig deep to try to find out who you're voting for.
Right.
You know, and the school board, in my opinion, matters big time, you know?
Sure. I, I even, uh. Celeste Riley, the county clerk. When I talked to her about it, she says her office gets calls frequently about school board candidates specifically, so. Which kind of surprised me, you know? I guess everybody has their own take on it, but now that I'm thinking about it, you know, everybody has kids and they wanna know who's on the school board and what's going on and all that kind of stuff, so. It makes sense.
And they have left it, in the past have left it up to the individual candidates to promote what, you know, their bullet points on why they're running or you know, why it's important to them to become a school board member.
Right. And I just think what I'm trying to do would just help streamline it all, you know, give everybody a fair chance to just get their points out. Um, and then the public can very simply just review the information. So anyway, let's uh give people a little bit background with me and you. So like, what was it?
Must have been a member.
Prior life. Actually, I, so to clarify for people, um, I used to play in a band called eleven eleven. And um, I used to play sometimes here at Eastland Golf Course and sometimes at um.
At the old Eastland.
The old Eastland or the uh Double Eagle.
Yes.
And so that was a lot of fun.
Absolutely.
But that's a bit in the past.
That was in our younger years.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, we were just talking about how it's been so hot recently and it's affecting me now that I'm getting older. I used to be like, I wanna be running around outside all day, every day in the heat, but now.
I don't mind the, the heat to be honest with you, you know, being a chef, I'm used to the.
Oh, right.
The heat, so I just don't like to get, be cold anymore. See, I was the exact opposite of you.
Oh, wow.
I used to love the cold.
Oh.
But no more.
Interesting.
I want the, I want the heat, bring it on.
Yeah.
Hotter is better.
I was in actually like Vietnam and Thailand for.
Where are you?
Yeah.
Wow.
And I was out there all the time. Maybe I just need to get re-acclimated.
That was high humidity, humidity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway.
So, yeah, and I guess my question would be, I didn't necessarily see you becoming a school board member or politically involved particularly, so how did that transition happen?
Neither did I.
Yeah.
Uh, never would have imagined, you know, looking back. Especially when I first got into the food service business, you know? Um, but I think that uh, the, the more and more I, I was involved in the community, cuz you know, we do a lot. Uh, here at Eastland Golf Course, Double Eagle, you know? When you're in the service business, you're servicing the people, the public and that's something I love to do and I've always done, you know, volunteered time, I'm on other boards. But from when you and I first met in the band days and the restaurant days and, you know? I didn't have kids, wasn't married. And my priorities were different than they are today.
Ah, gotcha.
You know, it's just, it's just life, I think, you know, everyone um. You know, um. Grows differently and those life goals change in time and I think um, being a community member, being involved for all those years, you know, we've been here since two thousand and four. That's when the business started for me here at Eastland. Double Eagle, two thousand and twelve. But um. Just being a community member and being in the food service business. Um, relating to like a party, a night that you were playing at a party.
Yeah.
Think about who comes to the parties, think about who attends.
Right.
You know?
You're, you're involved.
A lot of younger professionals, teachers are one of them.
Yeah, absolutely. We used to play the convention of teachers in Atlantic City every year.
Absolutely.
Huge night.
Big night. Yeah. I think you're giving yourself not enough credit being eleven eleven, one of the biggest bands in South Jersey at the time, you know, just to throw it out there, but anyway, um.
I don't like.
Great following, let's just say great following.
Sure, sure, around here, yeah.
You know, and your lead seated, lead, lead, excuse me, lead singer Jeff.
Yeah.
Giuliani.
Yeah.
You know? He uh had a great following, just like all you guys, right, so.
He still does with that Genesis band, right?
Yeah, and his daughters now.
I haven't seen them yet, but I hear they're great.
Yeah, his daughter's playing and you know, following in his footsteps, which is a beautiful thing. But going back to what I was saying. You know, when people gather here, it's your community members.
Yeah.
And a lot of the times it's educators, administrators, principals, you know? And when you're in the, in the bar business, if you will, and you know, restaurant and food and beverage, people are relaxed and you know, they open up.
That, I, you know what, I don't wanna cut you off, but being in the bar band scene, I was getting paid to literally be there every night and people talk, you know, you, you gotta be there, right?
Sure.
What else are you gonna do? Sit in the corner by yourself or whatever?
Sure.
You talk to people and they start to open up and you know, not to toot my own horn, but you can probably relate to this. That becomes a skill after a while.
Absolutely. So it's almost like therapeutic.
Right.
For people. And I get that and I respect that dearly and I don't, if you tell me something, I, I take it to heart, I don't just, I don't dismiss it, I'm not one of those people, like. Uh, when you tell me something important, of importance, especially when it affects our community, I take it, I take it to heart. And you know, having two businesses here in Vineland. Uh, family roots run deep in Vineland, Cumberland County. From a business standpoint as well as family, like you're talking four generations, you know, here in South Jersey and Cumberland County and Vineland in particular. My ancestors started in um Maze Landing, right there on Len, Lenape Lake.
Yeah.
You know, the concrete business and you know, did a lot of the roadways to Atlantic City, from Island, you know, all over. Um, and that's where they started, but um, you know? I know I'm getting sidetracked here, but, but going back to what I was saying. You know, when people tell me something, I take it to heart and
Right.
Uh, when you hear time and time and time again about the negative, not so much positive all the time, you know, positive things, you know, you wanna hear and it's a beautiful thing, but sometimes you don't react as as well to the positives as you do the negatives because it's like, you know? You, you wanna kind of help somebody in a negative time, right?
Yeah, you wanna clean up the problem.
You wanna help clean up the problem if you're that type of person and you know, they were talking to me and I was listening.
Right.
And think about that, two thousand and four until I just ran a year and a half ago. So that's a lot of years.
Twenty years.
Yeah, and that's, you know, um. And I'm talking every type of walk that comes through these buildings.
Yeah.
You know, Vineland's very diverse culturally. And we do events for every culture you can imagine. You know? And you hear from, it was consistent, you know, from.
It's almost like being the politician was baked in the cake for you.
Yeah, pretty much. So, you know, and I sat there and I listened for all these years. So finally I got frustrated enough. You know, being a Vineland resident, born and raised, now a business owner. I'm seeing it rub off, the negative effects rub off on the employee pool that's coming our way.
Yeah.
So I. And in a, in a selfish kind of way, I was like, we need to do something, we need, I need to do what I can to help fix it.
Right.
And that's, I think, why I ran for the school board. I never thought that it was political, I really, I don't think it should be political because it's dealing with kids, children.
Sure, sure, but unfortunately, there are a lot of political aspects.
Well, I'm finding that out, again, in a year and a half, you find that out.
Yeah.
But I still try to differentiate that in the decisions I make.
Oh, sure.
Because it's about the kids, at the end of the day, it's about the kids. And our duty as adults to set them up for success in life. And I don't know if you watched the last board meeting, but.
I think I was there.
Oh, you were there?
Yeah.
Well. You know? I'm not the best public speaker in the world and I know it's something that I have to work on.
You're doing it right now.
Yeah, well, it's you and I, you know, it's
Wow, sure.
Different when you're on the stage and people are looking at you and the camera's on your face.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
You know, and I'm really not the best public speaker, but it's something I have to work on and I took it as a challenge, I'm taking it as a challenge and I try to improve every day and um. I need to do better, public speaking wise, because there's some things I left out, you know?
Well, I, I heard you and you know, I, it, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's the same meeting, but you made a good point about getting the meeting minutes a little bit.
That was the meeting before this, but yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Earlier.
You know, you didn't say a lot, but you made your point very clear, you know, words like, I need time, you know, you're a busy guy.
Due diligence, yeah, I have two businesses, three kids, a wife. It's, it's a lot of work to read those agendas, you know?
Absolutely.
Cuz then you read it, but then you have to really understand it.
Yup.
If you have questions, you have to pose the questions ahead of time, if not, you have to do it publicly at the meeting. Which I've done because I just didn't have enough time, they never got back to me, whatever the case may have been.
Yeah.
I believe that's part of our you know, more obligation to the board, to the citizens of Vineland.
Yeah.
To ask those questions, but it's but sometimes it's almost looked as a, as a negative, you get like a negative feel if you ask a question.
Well, sure.
You know, so.
Doing what I'm doing, I, I can certainly relate to that.
I get it, I get it. But again, I'm learning a lot and um. From those years and years, I just.
What was it specifically about that, the last meeting? Because?
The last meeting, I, I spoke up about, you know, raising the bar, cuz I feel like we're lowering the standard. You know, there were some recent examples of um absenteeism. There were some truancy issues, I guess, uh, an article written about how, you know, truancy's a problem in our district and.
You know what, that actually relates to one of the topics I wanted to bring up, it's a little out of order, but that doesn't really matter. The meeting I was at was the one where there was a lot of um presentations about student performance progressing upwards, which I think uh, generally speaking, obviously, if it's trending in a positive direction, that's cool. But you know, from your perspective, somebody who deals, deals with it more frequently than I do, is there a lot more that needs to be done?
Absolutely. Positive growth is an amazing thing and that's what we wanna see. But you also have to look at it and say, why is there positive growth? And what's behind it?
Because you're so far down already?
Yeah, so, cuz we're, cuz we're, the, the standard is, the bar has been lowered and it continues to be lowered, which is the issue I had at the last meeting because of some things that were brought to light about attendance and allowing kids to graduate to get their diploma, they, you're a minor graduate, right?
Yeah.
Right, you take pride in your diploma, correct?
Well, I, I generally speaking, yes.
Yes.
But having been through the education system, going to college and then becoming a bit of an educator myself, I have a slightly different nuance in it, as in like, well, what does that piece of paper actually mean? You know, it's did I graduate from a top school or did I just do well where I was or?
Just know what to get by.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I, you know, I'm not an expert, but that's part of the reason I think conversations like these are important because you've got your nose in it now. And eh, you know, sometimes I don't, I don't want to be the negative Nancy who complains.
Me neither, I don't want to be either, trust me.
But.
But if we keep lowering the bar, lowering the standard, we're not setting these children up, these students.
Right.
These young adults, we're not setting them up for success.
Right.
And what are we doing? We're doing our communities a disservice. I have to ask myself, I live in Cumberland County, why is Cumberland County the poorest county in the state? Why does it continue to be the poorest county in the state?
Sure.
Why? Why is that?
We're forgotten.
We should be pushing our students harder now, more now than ever before.
Right.
We should be educating to the highest of standards.
There's no room for excuses anymore.
Exactly, cuz we're already low enough.
Right.
What are we gonna do to get out of it? We can't do it, but, and I understand, you know, we talk about inequities, right? We talk about the difference in, you know, upbringings and, you know, economic status, I, I get it all. But at what point do we stop using things as an excuse to be making things better, to, to set a higher standard, to say, hey? You know? Where you're at in life, you could get to this next part, this elevated part, if you came to school a little bit more often.
Right.
If you read the books that were given to you, if you put the work in, the hard work.
Yeah.
Right? I'm gonna use a local athletic, or excuse me, athlete. Two-time Super Bowl champ, Isaiah Pacheco. His hard work, his dedication, his grit, look where it got him.
Right.
And he, his, if you look at his background, you know, he came from a tough, tough upbringing, he lost two of his siblings. Right? God rest their soul, you know?
Yeah, sure.
So if I look at examples like that, like that should be an inspiration, I feel like his face and picture should be all over Vineland High School campus.
Right, the inspirational message.
Jamil Dambys of the world, the Test Fishers of the world, you know, our past people, our educate, educate, like the top, you know, ten percent of our class, these kids, and we're not going to schools and universities, we should be promoting that left and right.
Yeah.
That a little hard work can go a long way.
Absolutely.
And stop making excuses. Right? Because all we're doing, we again, continue to lower the bar.
Yeah.
And that's why you might start seeing things going up. So if the grading system that I keep hearing about left and right, see, I'm not, we're not savvy to the day-to-day operations of being on the board, we're not supposed to be.
That's another topic I was gonna bring up.
So, we're not supposed to be, we're supposed to be and our duty as a board member is to focus on the policies and regulations that are in place. Right? Those checks and balances to make sure that those things are being upheld to. That's standard, okay? So they're already there, we're supposed to stay there. So just like with the graduation, with the attendance, you know? It was brought to my attention that we allowed students to have over fifty days absent to graduate and get that diploma. And to me, I, that, that could be part of the problem because we allowed that.
Right.
Our numbers are up, you know, you can skew numbers however you want, if you are allowed to bend the rules a little bit.
What's the phrase?
The state standard's ten percent, there's a hundred and eighty days at school, that's eighteen days.
Statistics don't lie, liars use statistics, you ever heard that one?
That's a great point.
Yeah.
You should say that again.
Statistics don't lie, liars use statistics, and you know who taught me that?
Who taught you that?
Mr. Nelson, ninth grade biology.
Seriously?
Yeah.
An educator that
He was great, he was great, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So that's what kinda got me in.
Yeah, you're fired up.
And lined up, yeah, fired up, I get fired up, I'm a passionate person.
Yeah, well, I don't see it all the time.
You know, um, but yeah, so, you know, and I, and I take, I'm, I always tell people, you cut me open, I believe red and gray, like that's, that's me. You know? And, and I, and I truly believe that, like, you know, we have to give back to our community, you know? And I feel like that this could, you know, me being on the board could maybe help a little bit to try to get
Yeah.
some light on what's really going on, you know, because you don't always get the full truths.
Right.
You know, so, anyway.
So, since you brought it up.
Oh, thanks.
What exactly is this policy regarding whether you're allowed to show up to the schools? Do you, you know anything about what I'm talking about?
Yes, there, we're supposed to notify administrators, administration downtown.
Yeah.
Uh, prior to going to a school.
Right.
Yes.
And then even if you do get the permission and the walkthrough, whatever you call it, tour, whatever it is, it's supposed to be non-evaluative? Have you heard that aspect?
No, I'm not sad.
So basically.
I'd have to look into it and get back.
Yeah, and again, if somebody wants to correct me, I'm not an expert, but last year, somebody asked me to run for school board. And I was like, oh geez, I don't know if I'm qualified to do that. And so we had correspondence back and forth. And so I went down the rabbit hole a bit and again, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is, even if you do show up to a school to see what's going on, you're not allowed basically to use it as part of your information for what you do on the board. It's supposed to be just like, I guess, a passive walkthrough, you know? I don't, you know, it seems a little weird to me and I'd probably lose my mind if I were on the school board and I couldn't even just show up when I felt like it to a school, just to see what's going on.
Well, I understand, there's securities in place and, you know, I get it. You should never just feel like you could just walk in anywhere uninvited or, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me.
Hey, sorry, I just gotta grab the HMI.
Sure.
Oh, sure.
Are you, would you like a drink, by the way? A cup of coffee or ice water or anything?
Doesn't matter, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. So, yep, thank you guys, sorry. So, just so you know, there's policies in place.
Yeah.
That everyone that enters that building.
Yeah.
Whether it's the high school, whether it's Manny's, whether it's Memorial, any of the multiple schools that we have here in Vineland. You have to sign in.
Sure.
Show ID and get welcomed in. So even if I didn't call admin downtown to let them know, I would still need to do this.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's a basic security check, I get that.
Which is great, in my opinion. Now they wrote, they scan your license.
Oh, yeah.
So if you're, I don't know, sexual offender, whatever it might be.
Yeah.
They don't have to allow you to enter that school, they can stop you right there on your track.
That makes sense.
You know?
But you're, you're an elected board member with, I assume, no track record like that, so I would assume that you would be allowed to show up and just basically walk around and see how the classrooms are going.
I've always been welcomed with open arms in every building I've ever been in.
Oh, okay, so.
And they ask question, is everything all right, anything I can help you with?
Okay.
You know, can I, are you here to see the principal? You know, anything I can do for you? Security is always, I give the security staff kudos.
Oh, that's great, yeah.
You know, they're, they're there all the time at every door you walk into. They're there and, yeah, they do a wonderful job, again, very welcoming. Maybe it's just because I'm a board member, but, you know, I, I hope they treat everybody that walks into those doors that way because it's uh you know, it should be that way, you know, but yeah, I, I've never felt not welcomed at a school.
Maybe it was just the way the policy was worded or my interpretation.
Can be like that, you know, black and white. You know, some of the past board members might have took offense to that because, you know, they were used to a certain way where they didn't maybe had to, they'd have to ask, right? Now, um. The current, from an understanding, it's the current superintendent that put that in place. I could be wrong, I could be misspeaking, but I just
Yeah, but by your.
Believe that's why, which is fine, again. It's just another added security measure to, to make sure that.
Yeah, but by your explanation, doesn't really seem like a problem, it just.
It's not, I, I said, I've always been very welcome.
Yeah.
You know? And, yeah, they, they usually welcome you with open arms.
Cool. I guess then similarly, uh, since I've had a little bit of, I don't know, frustration, not just with the school board, but with um candidates on both sides of the aisle being hesitant to talk or all that. Can you help clear up what goes on with, I guess, what topics you're allowed to talk about and which ones you're not? When dealing, I guess, not just with somebody like me, but even if you're just out and about in the community, talking to a parent or a voter or whatever.
Great, great, great question. Every board has their code of ethics, so you have to follow this code of ethics. We sign the paperwork, we review it every year, our board solicitor brings it up and we discuss it every year, pretty much, just as a reminder, a refresher on the code of ethics and what we're to do. All information at a Vineland Board of Education meeting would be listed on the agenda, all topics. Those topics are public.
Right.
Those topics can be discussed. Because it's public, it's anyone can attend the meeting.
Yeah.
They are on, I believe, YouTube, right?
Yeah, I've watched a couple.
They used to be on Channel Two, you know, back in the day when everything was televised, now everything's, obviously things changed in time with technology. But everything's public and anything discussed at a public meeting can be discussed, any topic. What can't be discussed is stuff that's in the executive sessions. It could be litigation, it could be salary, it could be employee-based, anything that has to do with those type of things.
Would there be then some type of um differentiation though that some of the things being discussed in executive session might be relevant to what a voter wants to know?
Yes, but again, there's securities in place, there's laws in place that you know, what happens in executive sessions should not be discussed, discussed outside of the executive session.
Yeah.
Now, I'm not saying that every board member follows those rules or has in the past.
Right.
They should though, you know? There's confidentiality for, for a reason.
Yeah, I guess I, I would wonder though at a certain point because I, I totally respect the idea, like you don't want everybody to know every detail about every meeting or whatever, you know, people should have their safe spaces to make their decisions and stuff like that. I, I wonder though, is there some type of pipeline where after the meeting happens, then the relevant information trickles out? Like what we actually do need to know kinda comes out eventually? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I like how you're asking and twisting and crowding, but um.
I mean, I guess like the, the idea is that if something really important happened in executive session that people should know, like would it eventually be known in some way, shape or form?
All depends on the topic, you know? All depends on the topic, you know.
Yeah.
You know, you can see it flourish later on. Um, there's negotiations that happen, um you know, discussions that happen and yes, you do see them. But I don't think it's advertised as, oh, the board and I were discussing it at an executive session and now we just introduced it. You know what I mean?
Okay, yeah.
These are, these are things that that happen and and take place for a reason back in executive session.
Sure, sure, sure.
You know, that's where a a lot of things go on and, you know, a lot of, like I said, uh litigation, uh confidentiality, uh agreements or contractual issues, stuff like that. Um, where some of the, I guess, information needs to be protected. Why? I don't know why it is that way. Just the way it is.
Right.
I mean, I'm I'm only on the board a year and a half, a year and six months.
Yeah.
Almost seven, July. Um, you know, I don't understand why, because you know, a lot of the stuff is already public knowledge, you know, like if you looked up salaries, I believe salaries pub- public knowledge, like have you ever looked into a salary or?
I I've gone down a little bit of that rabbit hole where like there's a step program for the teachers.
Yeah.
Um, you guys don't get paid anything, right?
No, board members don't get paid.
Well, that's, I mean, I think that's a tragedy to begin with, uh.
Yeah, well, you know what? It's it's your way of giving back.
Sure, I get that. I get it. I guess what happens though is, and not just from the school board um standpoint, but you know, I think the guys at the Millville City Commission, they get something like nine thousand bucks a year and it it gets weird where like a whole bunch of people from the public will scream, you know, at a school board meeting or a city council meeting or whatever. And it's like, well, th- these guys are just volunteering their time, basically.
Pretty much. And we're elected, you know.
Yeah, yeah, they're elected.
Honestly, though, but to to nip that in the butt, honestly, since I've been on the school board, I've never been screamed at. And there's been some hot topics.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were there at the meeting, I think, policy fifty seven, fifty six.
Yep.
That was a hot topic. That was a hot issue. And that's where um I think as a board member, you, you know, that's where it gets real dicey, you know, the pressure's on, you know, um and then that's when it gets political. Even though, at the end of the day, you can call me whoever you want, but the decision I made on that was based on uh professionalism.
Sure.
And honesty and integrity and character. And whoever wrote those policies at the state level, I'm saying it to you.
Yeah.
Is it, it's a tragedy. I I know that they think they're doing the right thing by protecting uh a a class of people or whatever.
Yeah.
But every child that walks through those doors has a policy that protects every child, no matter what that child believes, no matter what that child is, all these policies are already in place.
Yeah.
So for us to take a certain group that's hot on the political uh agenda.
Sure.
And politicize that at a school level, doesn't work with me. I'm sorry, it doesn't.
And I don't know if you remember my comment during that meeting, but I mean, well, that was like a three hour.
There was a lot of comments. Yeah, it's okay, but we never, you know what? Never got screamed at.
No, 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 no.
Spoke their mind.
Yeah.
And some people were very strong, you know, stronger than others.
Yeah.
And it's, it was great, it was eye opening experience for me to see and to hear from both sides and to see all the truths and all the experiences.
Yeah.
And it just helps make you become the person that you are. And and I'm glad that I have the morals, values, ethics that I was raised with and that I believe in. Because it was a test to to that.
Absolutely.
You know, it was a test to it. And I'm all about integrity and, you know, and um, you know, I've made mistakes. I've made so many mistakes, I can't even count.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that I'm a perfect person at all. You know, um, I've made tons of mistakes in my lifetime. But I think that I can say that I've tried to learn from those mistakes and try to make myself a better person because of it. You know, we're all sinners, we all make mistakes.
Sure.
You know, and um I just feel like, you know, grown up and and maybe misleading my parents a little bit, you know,
Yeah.
because I was afraid of getting in trouble or whatever. All it did was make matters worse.
Yep.
So, but we have a policy in place that's written at the state level to to have, you know, deception in it and
That was kind of.
Keeping two different files on a student, like that, that's, that's asking a professional educator to pretty much lie.
Right.
To withhold the truth from a legal guardian.
This, I I had a conversation.
An issue with that.
I had a conversation with a teacher not too long ago where they said they had a student who was, you know, like a biologically a male and would come into school, put on their wig, play with it all day. And then, you know, when they leave, they put the wig back in their backpack or something. And it it made me think, what if they're, that person's parents came in and they just had to like not acknowledge the reality of this kid coming in and just dressing a different way, going by a different name, you know, how do you even do that?
I don't know, but it's okay. If that student, if it makes that child feel better.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering about putting the teacher in the wrong spot to
Exactly.
To not talk about it at all.
Well, the teacher, in my opinion, they have an obligation as well to the safety of that child.
Sure.
And sometimes I think we overstep our bounds, right? By saying, oh, well, I have to withhold what's going on because I'm afraid the consequences, the repercussions of what happens when that child goes home. That's a, that's a.
That's dicey.
That's dicey.
Yep.
Real dicey. You're walking a fine line right there.
Yep.
You're playing, you talk about legalities and so again, whoever wrote that policy, I would love to sit down and talk to them on why, why that policy was written the way it was.
And my comment during that meeting was basically about how the policy was written, as in they didn't have their terms clear. Like, how do you even follow the guideline if you don't even know what X or Y or the in between is?
Yeah, and 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 I'm a father of three. I have a, my first born is a, is a young lady, right? You know, female and I don't know how I feel about knowing that little Johnny or Jane, whatever you wanna call Johnny or Jane, Johnny at home, Jane at school, could walk in when my daughter is in there using the restroom or when she's in swim practice in the locker room, putting on her bathing suit. And then little Jane, at the time, is in the locker, same locker room and gets undressed and now she has to see somebody's exposed, you know, male genitalia when she should be safe at school. And I'm saying it's not being safe, like I just have a hard time with it.
Sure.
You know, and that's my belief, that's my right as a American citizen of my freedoms and and.
And if, for nothing else, that's how we grew up.
Yeah.
You know, it's, we, even if.
And times do change and things do evolve, but I think that's, again, overstepping your bounds.
Yeah.
If you wanna make that child feel safe, maybe have a separate restroom for that child or um, you know, then you talk about title, I think it's ninety nine, title.
Title nine.
Title nine, excuse me.
Yeah.
Title nine about women's right to their own, you know.
Yep, how do you square that, right?
Yeah, so it's a tough one. And I get it, you know, if I was a parent that had a transgender transgender child, then, you know, I'm still gonna love my child no matter what, but that's not in all realities and I get that. But still, it's a tough one.
It is, it's a very, very tricky.
You know, but anyway.
All right, yeah, so let's pivot. Um.
So, yeah, anything public on the agenda goes out to the public.
Yeah.
Public's fully made aware of everything that goes on at a meeting. Um, one of our board members the other night spoke publicly and said that parents didn't know, people didn't know about uh a topic of that evening. He misspoke because that topic is listed. Remember I asked for it a little further in advance, there's meeting, the, there's agenda items.
Yeah.
That's what's listed on the Bonn Public Schools website.
Right.
And you can get that anytime on that website.
Right.
The minute, the meeting minutes after, obviously, the meeting's um done, as well as that agenda. I believe it's supposed to come out seven days prior. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, but it should be posted.
Yeah.
On our website.
Right.
So it's open.
So all the public stuff is.
Public is listed, yes. The only thing that's on there, it says at every meeting, executive session.
Yeah.
And sometimes there are executive sessions, sometimes there's just not.
Right. So, yeah, to pivot to this other topic, I was talking to somebody on my radio show who said that um perhaps what could help somebody like me who's acting as like a press outlet and maybe the public in general is if the superintendent was more visible. And I don't know, I'm not, again, I'm not an expert, but you know, just to get your take on it, would that be um something you'd be in favor of, having more visibility or do you think that's already being taken care of or?
What do you say visibility?
As in, um, maybe I should be asking the superintendent questions or having an interview or is there a role for the superintendent to be sort of like a PR person?
Anyone can ask a question. But I think because of the past, like you mentioned screaming and hollering and possible conflicts,
Yeah.
when the public speaks at a meeting to the superintendent or directs it to the board, we're not really supposed to reply at that, at that moment. They can get it off their chest, they can let their issues out. And it could be something positive, it could be something negative. But we're not supposed to engage.
Right.
With the public. So, yeah, they can ask questions at the, at the meetings, but is that what you're asking or should be, should, are you asking that the public should be allowed to just come in and meet with the superintendent at any time? I guess you can.
No, I think it's more of like a a leadership role, as in the person I was interviewing was implying that the superintendent should be like the public liaison and.
I think they are. I think they're a public liaison. Um, now, if they're asking, should he be more, our our current superintendent should uh superintendent be more present at things? Is that's what?
I guess that's kind of the direction.
He's a busy man, but that's, that's up to him. I mean, um, I feel that I have a sense of presence with, when I attend things or especially school, school board.
Yeah, I've seen you around.
Yeah, I mean, I attend student meetings with superintendent, we're going to the schools, we sit down, we ask questions to the students, get feedback, whether we wanna hear it or not. Most recently, we're, we we discussed the the students, uh they weren't understanding the whole armed guard thing.
Yeah.
That's a recent, uh, I think, positive.
Addition.
For addition for our schools, right? Knowing that we had that safety there, that safety net, at least somewhat of a fighting chance, God forbid.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, we go that ever have, you know, they're, they have somebody in all the schools. That's our, that's our goal to get. All fifteen schools, sixteen schools, wherever it is, that armed guard.
Yeah, I've I've heard that for a couple of years. Most people seem to be on board with it.
Yeah. And that's an example of what you were asking earlier about the exec sessions, stuff like that. Stuff that's being discussed because it's something positive for the district, right? But there's a lot of things that need to be discussed, litigation, the laws, the votes, what's right, what's wrong, before it gets out to the public.
Yeah.
And then it gets voted on, it gets discussed and, you know, there's a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of negotiations that go on.
Right. And you don't necessarily need to have the whole town talking about every
Exactly.
twist and turn of a negotiation.
That's why you have nine board members, that's why you have, uh, you have to entrust in the professionals that are in in those
Yeah.
places. That's why, would you vote for a a board member? Take that in consideration, you know?
That's exactly one of the reasons why I think this is important because you wanna know that when you go in the voting booth and you send somebody to be your elected official, your representative, that they're actually gonna do it and if you, I mean, do it well. And if you disagree with some of the things they do sometimes, it doesn't have to turn into like this big drama fest or whatever. It's everybody has their own way of doing things and figure out who you want in there before you vote and then let it play out. And if you think somebody's doing a particularly bad job, you vote for somebody else next time.
That's right.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
And, you know, and.
And that's where it becomes the public's responsibility to actually pay attention instead of getting mad after the fact.
Well, some people don't get off their couch or come to a meeting unless it personally affects them.
Right.
Um, I get, I understand it, but again, if you have an issue, just like here at a restaurant, you come here, you have a bad meal. If you don't say anything to me or to the chef or to the server, you're doing us in in injustice.
Right.
You know, and you you say, hey, you know, if it's, i- if it's not broke, you know, don't fix it.
Right.
So if I don't know, we don't know about it, how can we work hard to get it fixed, you know?
Absolutely.
Again, everybody makes mistakes, but what can we do to make it better?
Yep.
You know?
Uh, so another thing I had on my list was the um issue over the years, I've been hearing from various teachers that um student behavior and discipline policies. Uh, I've heard a couple of times about restorative practices and whether they're effective or not. You have a general take on this area?
Our current discipline is uh restorative practices. That's the, what our superintendent believes in. I think that's what um, New Jersey is really promoting and pushing. I think it works in a lot of cases, right? But I think here in our community, you know, we need to do a better job um with discipline because um you know, we it's tough. And that's, that's one of the negatives you hear in the public about how bad Bonn Public Schools are. They're not really that bad. They're not. Issues happen everywhere.
I'm not, I'm not in the schools, I don't know.
If, yeah, again, you raise the bar and expectations and have those students and parents vested into their children.
Yeah.
Don't talk about it, be about it.
Right.
That's my motto. Don't talk about it, be about it.
Right.
Have, have those parents come in when they, when they, when the first day they're a Bonn Public Schools student.
Yeah.
Have them sign a packet that I will do my parently duties to ensure that my child gets to school. That my child has everything that they need to, to be a good student.
Right.
Have them invested into their child, into Bonn Public Schools.
Right.
Hold them accountable. And then as that child grows, those those goals will change and those things will change, but at the end of the day, you have to hold yourself accountable.
Right.
Right?
That has to be a two way street.
Yes, because it's not just the teachers, it's not just educators, it's not just the Bonn Public Schools. It's gonna take the entire community. If you want things to get better, if we wanna get Cumberland County out of the poorest county in the state, generally why we are, I love Bonn, I love.
Y'all has a lot of beautiful scenery and stuff to do.
The farmlands, there's wonderful industry here in Bonn. There's a lot that we have to offer. We have some of the best educators in the game. We have almost every tool a student could imagine, no matter what their disability might be, right? We have the resources and the tools in place to take care of every student, right? But we need to do a better job. We can allow uh three, four, five time offenses uh of especially any kind of violent act. You don't send your kid to school to be getting beat up all the time or jumped or whatever. Right? So it shouldn't happen. And when it does happen, it needs to get addressed. And if, you know, again, I I was not a a a perfect student. I made mistakes when I was a student, but I was also held accountable. Right? And when I got home and my father or mother heard about it, you know, where your father gets home, you know, where, this is unacceptable, you know? And and they always put it on me this way, my my own experience. When you make a mistake, you're not only making a mistake for you, think about your, your last name.
Yeah.
You're, you're affecting your whole family, your grandparents that worked hard to get to where they're at.
Yeah.
Your mom and dad, where they're, you know, where they're at today. You're a reflection of that, that core. So if family's important to you, you know, you're, you're addressed, so so.
Decent sense of legacy.
Yeah, so discipline goes a lot further, I think, than than just, you know, talking it out all the time. Like, you have to hold students accountable for their actions and teach them at a young age that it's not okay to do certain things.
Right.
I think now the environment today is. I think now the environment today is, you know, hands off district, which I get, you know, no child should be you know, be touched by uh uh somebody that's not qualified, security needs to be there for a reason.
Okay, yeah.
But if a child uh uh um is having a temper tantrum and you know, throwing stuff around, they want to remove all the other kids and let that child work it out. To me, that's not the right thing to do, but who am I, you know, I I don't know. There's some professional there.
Intelligent adult to me.
Yeah, but there's some, there's some science to it, right? And there's, you know, the restorative practices way where it's like, let that, let Johnny, I use Johnny word. Let let name, excuse me, let Johnny, you know, figure it out and calm down, let's talk him down, let's let him throw the chair, let him destroy the classroom, no, I'm sorry, that's unacceptable, we're setting them up for failure. And then as they get older in school, they're gonna think, oh, I can do whatever I want. It's not that, the world doesn't work that way.
Nope.
And we wonder why crime is the way it is, we wonder why nobody respects the law and order, we wonder why, right? So now it becomes political.
Right.
See how it evolves?
Oh, I I get it.
But it starts at an early foundation and if we can correct that as as a society.
Yeah, a little bit more accountability and discipline.
Goes a long way.
Absolutely.
Right, you might not agree with it, okay? It might be hard to you to understand why it's not acceptable to let little Johnny throw the chair across the room and scare the crap out of all the other 20 whatever students are in that classroom. You know, not everybody understands that, especially at a young age, they're volatile, right? So we have to ask ourselves, let's figure out that child, let's talk to that child, let's get that child out of that situation. You keep, you never blame a kid, especially at her, at at that age. Why is that child acting out like that? What's causing that child acting out? Now we have to look back at the family and and it goes a lot deeper, you know, it's a lot deeper. So um there's again, fine line, where do you draw the line? What obligation does the this educational system, where does it stop?
Yeah.
Right? Because now you're talking about a whole different, the discipline needs to come from both ends, it can't just come from the school.
Sure.
So that's why I say, you know, you have to hold people accountable. Then my kid's gonna make mistakes and they have to understand the mistakes that they make and why they made them, what did they do to make them and why it's wrong. And us as parents have to say, hey, you know, you can't be doing that.
Yeah.
And not always blame the professional, you know? It's the teacher's fault or it's, make every excuse in the book, we gotta stop. We have to start, and and I get it, listen, I get it, there's two sides to every story, right? But I think there's some point in time where you have to start recognizing the problem when it's repetitive and repetitive and repetitive. You know?
Yeah, the leadership all around needs, whether it's.
Trust factor too.
An elected official, a teacher or a parent, we're supposed to be the adults in the room figuring out things and showing the children the differences between right and wrong and all that stuff.
That's right. It's not just about math and English and science, where it should be, history and.
Yeah, but it's culture at the same time.
Exactly, exactly.
If we don't.
We need to clean our act up is what we need to do.
Yeah, and if we don't as adults be the adults in the room, then the kids are not going to be shown the example.
Exactly, like you and I right now, we're having a conversation, you might not agree with what I'm saying, I might not agree with you what you're saying, but we're having a conversation, talking about it.
Right.
And I think there needs to be a lot more of that at the violent public school level.
Okay.
You know, I think the professionals need to start entrusting each other, working together.
As a team.
As a team.
Yeah.
Right, listening to the people that have the boots on the ground. You know, and and work together to to try to make it better. Because the current environment, it it's, you know, it's getting better, there are, there are, there are improvements, right? You know, and there'll continue to be improvements, but it could be so, so much better.
Sure.
Yeah, and we, like I said, we need to work our way out of being the poorest county in the state.
Right.
And the only way we're gonna do that is by working together.
I agree.
Anyway.
Uh, so then another thing that came to my attention recently were these Donaldson hearings. Now, I don't know that much about them and maybe I'm the odd one out who doesn't know about these things.
No, you don't, you're not the only one out.
So maybe you could help explain like what they are, how they come about and your involvement with them.
Okay, so Donaldson hearing is um well, you know, uh, the V A, Violent Education Association or the Teachers Union. It's a union, so there's a tenured teacher and then there's a non-tenured teacher. So the non-tenured teacher is usually a first year, second year, third year. I want to say they work maybe four years before they become tenure. So if there's a teacher within that timeframe, that's not doing a good job, they're doing, uh, they get, they get, you know, um.
Bad performance evals or something like that?
They get evaluated and it's a poor evaluation or uh they're not doing their part. Then they can be recommended up for, you know, Donaldson hearing, which would be the term, the determination of the board and administrators to say that this person isn't fit to be a violent public schools staff member.
Right.
But after those four years, you're protected under the union and it's, you know.
So unless I space out or something, so you get the bad performance eval and then the Donaldson hearing is.
Comes to the board at an executive session, something that's not supposed to talk about.
Somebody said something along the lines of, is the Donaldson hearing functioning sort of like an appeal? Or is that something else? As in like, if a teacher is being recommended to be let go? And then maybe through the union, the Donaldson hearing comes up to like.
I don't know the whole process, I'm not savvy to the whole process of how it gets to us. But appeal is is what it looks like to us, yes, by the time it gets to us, if uh if that person doesn't feel like they're being treated fairly, I guess, I I don't know how it gets to us, but yeah. Because we don't do the day to day, we're not involved with day to day operations, hiring, firing, stuff like that, like that's not our job.
But you're you are saying by the time it gets to you.
I guess, yes, if it gets.
It is an appeal.
I would imagine, yeah.
As in somebody else already recommended that they be let go and then you're taking a second look or you're not sure?
I think we're like the last ones that could maybe return it.
Okay.
Um, to give them another chance, if you will.
Sure.
Yeah, it doesn't happen often, but yeah, Donaldson hearings do happen every once in a while.
Sure.
And I I guess that is, you know, like what you just said, a second chance if 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 we feel that they weren't treated, if we feel like there was room for improvement or or that we think that they could do a good job for our students.
Yeah.
Yeah, stuff like that, so.
Cool.
But again, you have to trust the professionals that, why are they here, why are they?
Yeah, in the first place.
Job in jeopardy, like what did they do to get to that point?
Right.
So, but again, that happens in executive sessions and we're not, that's not um information that's available to the public.
Right, okay. Um, and then I guess that um relates to overall, are you guys directly involved in the hiring of teachers or that's?
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to double check with that.
We have to approve them and they bring up to us who they feel is the right person for the job.
Oh, and then what would that approval process look like?
Just comes at an agenda setting and um it's usually in the beginning of the meeting where ask you to approve like the transfers, the retirees, the hires and all that, that's where that was.
And so unless you had. Unless you had some sort of like outside knowledge of somebody being particularly bad or something like that, you you probably just approve.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, because we're entrusting our administration and the staff members that are in those interview processes. They know, like, I don't know what to look for in an educator, that's not my forte.
Right.
You know, that's not where my educational background is, I don't put it now, but if someone brings up to my attention, somebody like you from the public and says, hey, just want to let you know,
so and so.
So and so has a record or is involved with this or involved with that. You can make, if you feel the need, you can make that recommendation or pass that information along. And then they have to do their due diligence to figure it out, but yeah, no, it it should, there's a process in place and that process is is a very good process in my opinion. The interview process, uh, they have an interview team where they sit people down and they they interview them. And all those uh job postings are listed and there's a timeframe where the listing is open. And they have to apply within for that posting, once that posting's closed, that posting's closed.
Right.
You have so many applicant applicants, then they go through them and they do their due diligence and 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 follow up with those applicants and they try to determine who the best candidate is.
Yeah.
And then we're presented with the person's name, you know? And that's, that's pretty much it.
I got you.
Um, and if you've been to the meetings, I mean, very rarely would you hear an objection, because again, we have to entrust in the people that are put in place to do those jobs.
Yeah, I got you. Yes, I I've been asking a couple of advocacy issues, or I mean, asking questions to get people's take coming from where I'm sitting to see how I could help facilitate what I'm trying to do, so this is like not directly, well, it's a little bit school board related. But I guess I'm just setting up that we're veering off a little bit. So in trying to get information from candidates or elected officials, I think what could help the general public understand all of this more is if we reintroduced civics into the school curriculum. Do you think that there would be room for that or that might be a good idea?
Yeah, I could agree with that statement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there there's a sentiment going around that, um, I don't know, sometime in the 1970s, we switched over to social studies, which was broader of a topic as opposed to being like, this is exactly how your government works, like at the local level or and this is the constitution and all that kind of stuff and in my mind.
It would definitely help for sure.
Yeah.
It should be an elective that a child or student could elect to take.
I would, I would say even mandatory.
Mandatory curriculum?
Yeah.
Again, that has to come from Trenton, that's that's out of our.
Well, but that's, I'm not saying you, I'm not asking you to do it, but just like as a general opinion, like.
Yeah, of course.
When when I opened that ballot the first year and I was like, okay, I'm being asked to vote for a county surrogate. And I'm like, what is a county surrogate?
Sure.
And then what's the difference between a Republican county surrogate and a Democrat county surrogate?
Their beliefs, their their.
Well, sure, but how does that apply to the job that they're doing and all that kind of stuff? So now I I felt like I was playing catch up, like, okay, now I gotta go look up what the surrogate is.
Yeah, you have to do the research.
Right.
See, that's the thing too, like with these things and these phones, you know, the tech, today's technology. If somebody wants to know the information.
They can find it.
Find it in 30 seconds, not even, probably quicker.
That that happens, there there's also a sense of, you know, especially me doing this kind of work is sometimes the content doesn't even exist. You know, like, I don't have a full portfolio on, you know, why Rob Bono is a good school board candidate. You know what I mean, not that I would say you're not, but if I were looking, you know what I mean, it wouldn't come up, you know, so.
No, what would come up is whatever information is out there on on me.
Yeah.
You know, newspaper articles about the restaurant or, you know, some awards that I might have won over the years, maybe the school that I went to, like, some of your background would pop up, but I I get what you're saying a hundred percent, like, you know, if you're gonna make an educated vote.
Yeah.
It should be, the information should be out there and why, and then you have to do your own research because, you know, you have to entrust that that, what you're reading is the truth.
Well, that too, yeah, and there's also something about um, how much are we expecting the average person to do? As in, did anybody bother to consolidate the information for the public as opposed to I'm looking at a ballot of 30 people, now I gotta, for three weeks, you know what I mean?
I get it, you'll never see, oh, I can't say never, but you don't see 30 people run for school board, that's.
No, no, not school board, but the overall ballot, you know, sometimes that gets involved.
During my campaign, I always, a lot of the, you're older, um, because you, you know, you talk to people and try to get their opinions on things and so some ex-board members, oh, it's a thankless job thing, I don't find that at all. I I get it, but um, no, I don't think, I don't think that at all, I think it's very rewarding at times. Can be very rewarding at times, because you know that it's affecting your community and you and and students of the community, you know?
Doing something that actually matters.
Yeah, that's gonna have a positive impact, but you hope has a positive impact.
Yeah.
You know, that's my intentions anyway. Yeah, and just knowing that I was a part of, you know, helping security, helping discipline, you know?
It's gonna help yourself too, because you're gonna live in a better community.
That's right.
So you help yourself and then it trickles out.
That's right.
And I feel that way about what this is, is like, well, I genuinely wanted more information and I found that a lot of other people felt the same way. And so it's like, okay, I'll run around town knocking on doors, making phone calls and put it on my stupid little website and people can look at it if they want to.
That's awesome, because it's a, it's a forum that you can research that information, you're you're giving them access to it.
Right, and they should continue to research beyond whatever it is I'm doing, but at least it's a step in the process, I guess.
And you know, back to what I was just saying, like being a part of something, you asked a question earlier about like the discipline and where it's going and and you know, in our district and, you know, we formed a committee within the school board.
Yeah.
Myself, Dennis Rivera, Kim Kottisbadi, Gene uh Gene Medio, there's four of us. And we listened to elementary principals and vice principals, security guards, middle school administration, high school administration and all these meetings.
Yeah.
And we brainstormed together, we and we and we listened to what they had to say. And you know, it helped our superintendent understand a more broader picture.
Absolutely.
You know? Vine's a little more unique than some other, and it took him some time to realize it and then he realized that there was some adjustments that needed to be made and we need to start doing a better job holding these kids accountable for their actions. And apparently from what I understand, you know, it's getting better, it's getting a lot better.
That's awesome.
Yeah, the numbers are getting better, the 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 fights are lessening and, you know? There was always fights in high school, there was fights when you went, fights when I went, you know?
Sure.
I always remember that, but if you saw the same person fighting twice, it was a rarity if you did.
Right. They didn't fit in the bud.
Yeah, or they wouldn't be in that school any longer.
Right.
They would have to go to the alternative program, right? Which is still available in your district, not that you want to have to send kids to.
You gotta do what you gotta do sometimes.
Do what you have to do to to take care of the students that are there to become better people for your community, better people for themselves.
Yeah.
You know, every child has that right to get their education and and build on their educational resume to become the person they didn't want to be, that's the beauty of America.
Yeah.
You know, no matter what your background is, you can become the next president of the United States, I mean.
You have the opportunity.
You have the every opportunity to become the next two time Super Bowl running back champ, you know what I mean, like.
A bass player for 1111.
A bass player for 1111, a chef, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, um, that's the beauty and that's why I love my town, my community, you know, there's there's a lot of love, you know, being in the food service business tonight, I I try to, you know, bring the best out of people because while you're out there in the rural world and when you come here, I try to get away from all that. Sit down, enjoy your time with each other.
It's a service. It's a service.
It's, yeah, forget about all that other stuff you're doing. While you're here, sit down, enjoy a good meal, maybe a beverage and and sit down and relax. Put your feet up. It's not a rush. When we first opened, people, oh, it takes too long to eat there. You know what? Sorry, I'm not, this is not McDonald's, this is not Burger King. I hope you spend two, three hours here, really. Because while you're here, you're in a safe environment, you're overlooking the greens. You know, if you ever sit on that patio on a nice day like today and you have lunch and you're sitting there, you're like, you don't wanna get up and leave. It's therapeutic, man, it really is. Yeah, so again. You stick to your guns, your your values and hopefully it works at the end of the day. Maybe make a little money while you're at it or whatever, but you know, that's my attitude on it. Um, we could always do better. Including myself, you know? And so I try to get involved and stay involved.
Yeah, so my second idea, and I I know we've been talking a while, so we can rush through these couple ideas. Um, is. When I started doing all this, it became very apparent to me that. The local papers weren't doing this type of work anymore. And so the idea was to just have the county do a basic version of what I'm doing.
Great idea.
You hand in your signatures to the clerk. They say, here's a standard question packet, answer it. And we put your answers on a website.
Beautiful. That's a great idea.
Well, I'd like to see it actually happen.
Have you brought that up to the clerk, county clerk?
Yeah, I think, I think she said it has to go through the state level.
Why?
Uh, because they make the election laws and all that kinda stuff and.
What's wrong about letting the?
I think, I don't know if there's anything ethically wrong. I think what is, somebody actually has to change the law.
What laws against that though?
I guess it's uh clearly defining what the role of the clerks are.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think that's what it is.
Understood.
And then the third idea. Even if we had that in place to get the basic information out. We would still need something like a newspaper or some type of third party outlet.
Newspaper.
Modern day, uh, high-tech entity, whatever you wanna call it. That does the follow-up. Ask, okay, I saw X, Y, and Z on your answers through the county. Uh, but your opponent says this, what's your take on that? Follow-up questions and all that. Uh, would you feel as though we could use some of that around here too?
Absolutely. And I think that is, I think all this stuff is a is a problem. We're supposed to be the land of the free, right? Well, why do we have all these, why, why is all this red tape? What, all these road roadblocks? You're telling me that the the clerk, county clerk can't have a little piece of paper to give everybody that hands in the ballot or. They're, um, what's the?
The signature petition?
Yeah, the sig, excuse me, when they sign up to be, become, you know, to be put on that ballot for the elected position? What's what's the harm in that? To to educate them on what their next step should be.
Or.
Why is there red tape on that? Like, think about it. There's so much. Too many roadblocks, too much red tape. You know, the laws, you know, come on.
Can we just be normal ethical human beings and try to solve problems?
Create, but that's the, we created our own problems and that's why we're we're in the mess that we're in. That's why I think if we start over, if we could hit that reset button, if you will, and start over.
Lawfare too.
Yeah, too many. You gotta make that money. And I know they don't, I know the law law guys don't wanna hear that kinda stuff because that's, that's. Exactly, and I get it. I get it, I get it, I get it. But when you're talking regulation. Red tape. That's the, that's the state we live in, you know?
That reminds me.
That's the state we live in.
I live eh in Philly and the landlord, my my girlfriend was cleaning the sunroom. First time, she was just wiping the windows and. It just shattered. She was, you know, Windex cloth, whatever, window shattered and was like. Oh, well, you guys have to pay for that because it was under sixty bucks and it's like. Okay, I guess that's what it says in the contract, but it's like, now I don't wanna touch anything because there's a rule for everything, you know? I can't just come to you and be like, your house is a little bit old, a window broke, could you replace the window?
Yeah, or the landlord could say, hey, you've been, you're a great tenant, you've been paying your rent, I'll fix that for you. And maybe if it's that, if it's gonna hurt you that much, maybe you raise the rent another ten dollars next year to cover that cost. You know what I mean? Like, there's two sides to every story. And it's trying to work together to accomplish the goal. And what are we doing here is is what we're talking about. What are we doing? You know?
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. Well, again, I appreciate your time and insight.
This was fun, thank you.
Yeah, it can be.
Hopefully it works for the other candidates coming in. Um, the word on the street is we have some good ones coming up, so. Good luck.
Oh, you know what? Uh, so is it that every year, three peo, or three seats are open?
Not every year.
Not every year, okay. Or any seats?
Well, I can't, I, wait, well, I don't know that. I don't know the answer to that. Are they gonna run again? I'm not sure. Is it three seats every year that's open?
That was my understanding, but I was just wanted to double check with you.
Um, this year there are three seats. Um, and they're three-year terms, so there's nine seats, so yeah, I guess it is every three.
Right, right, staggered.
Yeah, so those three seats are constantly either being refilled by the same, you know.
So I, it should be on my radar that three seats are open and.
Every year, I I believe, yeah.
Well, but even so, this year specifically, there are three seats open, right? And so then I should be paying attention to who's up for reelection or.
Twenty twenty-six, that's when I run again, if I.
Yeah, that would be next year. Okay, cool.
Yeah, every, yeah, every three years, three-year term. So I'm in, like I said, a year and a half. So January first will be year two, the start of year three, sorry, start of year three. So yeah, if I had a, if I wanted to stay on, I'd have to run again for the election of twenty twenty-six.
Okay, cool. Again, thank you very much. I know you're a busy dude and so. Your time is much appreciated.
Yes, sir. Have a great day.
You too.